We are ready to call the order. If we could Reverend Austin, would you like to give us some invocation? Followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, the Councilman Flurry will lead us up.
Father God, we come today to gather in this place of government and we ask your Father to touch now the men/women who represent portions of this city and our mayor as she prepared to take on the orders tasked of leading this city. Bless what we're about to do and what we're about to say and that it will be pleasing, but most of all it be acceptable in your sight. In the name of Jesus we pray, amen.
Amen. Please, may I say?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right. Madam Clark, will you call the roll?
Mr. Bradford?
President.
Mr. Everson?
Here.
Mr. Jenkins?
President.
Mr. Corbin?
Here.
Mr. Flurry?
Here.
Ms. Lynch?
Here.
Mr. Bowman?
Here.
All right, and is there a motion to approve the minutes of the administrative conference meeting on January 12th and the city council meeting of January 13?
What's that?
And again, we've got, uh, let's see, if I can call that motion in second again, who made the motion?
Councilman Jenkins.
Uh, Councilman Jenkins and the second was by Councilwoman Lynch. And I believe our stuff is working correctly again today, but we're gonna go ahead and call out the motions and seconds as a backup, just to make sure. We've had some computer glitches, so we wanna make sure we don't miss anything. And that is a unanimous passage, so we are on to awards recognition of distinguished guests and communications. Do any council members have any awards recognitions of distinguished guests? And I know there has been one, and I would like to start real quickly by acknowledging School Board Member Jasmine Green, who's in the audience with us today, and we appreciate her being here. And then, Councilman Bradford?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. Mr. Chairman, I met a young lady last week who was doing great work and I am now working with her to help enlighten the community on a very needed and serious problem, not a problem, but an endeavor that we must make our citizens aware of. And her name is Constance Love, and I would like Ms. Love to come up and just briefly, Ms. Love, just share with the council and the mayor about your venture here. She just opened up a new business here in town on last Saturday out on 70th Street. Hi.
Hi. Thank you very much for welcoming Mr. Bradford and for you guys giving me an opportunity to speak real briefly. My name is Constance Love, and I did have my grand opening last week. I have an insurance agency located at 556 West 70th Street. And my primary focus, or our primary focus at this time, is to make sure that as many people as we possibly can here in the Louisiana area are enrolled in the Affordable Health Care. So I'm pretty sure everyone is well aware of the fact that the enrollment period, the open enrollment period, ends February the 15th. So regardless of, you know, I understand that some people are not very knowledgeable about the Affordable Health Care. Some people may not be very much in agreement of the Affordable Health Care, but I'm sure everyone would agree on one thing, that we wanna make sure that everyone in the state of Louisiana has health coverage. Okay? So the main purpose of the Affordable Health Care was to make sure that we increase the quality, availability, and affordability of private insurance. So unlike the navigators, I am a licensed insurance agent, as long as, as well as other people in my office are licensed insurance agents. So we're able to sit down and speak with them and talk with them, number one, about the tax liabilities of not having coverage. We can speak with them too about making sure that they have a plan that best suits their medical needs and also their financial needs as well. And we can streamline the process of having to go out on Marketplace and put in an application. We handle everything. So I have been working alongside with Willie Bradford and also Michael Williams, and we have a community forum, which I need the public's help with that. The community forum is gonna be at the Lakeside Gymnasium. That will be Thursday, February the 5th between 5:30 and 7:30. And once again, that will give people an opportunity to come in and speak with someone and answer some of the questions that they may have. Some people believe that the Obamacare is its own insurance carrier. Okay? Which, you know, we offer Blue Cross Blue Shield, we offer United Health Care, we offer Vantage, there's a variety of plans out there for people that are under the age of 65 and the median income between, I think it's a little under $12,000 up into $124,000. People are within that income range, depending upon the number of dependents they have, they may qualify for subsidies. So once again, we're working to make sure that we get the information out to the public. Once again, the first, or right now, the cutoff is going to be February 15th. So if you guys are able to help me, I would greatly appreciate it to get the knowledge out there and make sure that people that qualify are able to sit down and speak with someone that can help them make their best decision.
Love, I'm sorry. I was more, and I appreciate you coming and I appreciate those comments, and I wanted you to reiterate one thing. The fact that if you're not, if you don't have health insurance, there's a penalty that starts this year.
Yes, there's a penalty of 1%. It's gonna increase to 2%. The cap, well, not the cap, but I know next year the penalty will be 3% and the maximum that someone can be penalized for the entire year is $2,100. So it's important not only for someone to obtain medical coverage, but also to maintain it, which is the reason why I said it's important for them to sit down and speak with someone that's going to make sure that they're obtaining a plan that they'll be able to continue throughout the entire year. Because if they simply sign up for it and they let it expire in less than eight months, then yes, when they go to file their taxes, they're gonna be penalized for each month that they do not have coverage. So, and I do explain to people whenever I have the forum that this is not something that you can make a payment arrangement on. When you go to file your taxes, if you cannot prove that you've had coverage for over eight months, that's gonna be deducted from your refund.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions or, all right, thank you.
Any other council members have any communications or distinguished guests?
I had asked to make a brief presentation today.
That's right.
And I think we're set up, if we can. Jack, are we set up? You're not much on these presentations. For those that know me, I don't know if I've done this before here, but given the opportunity... I'm gonna take. Okay. Perfect. All right, still on. Let me make sure. Okay, so, and hopefully this is coming on the record. I'll move this over here and let me know. So the way this all came about initially was I was describing to some folks in the area about the I-69 project. And of course, not a lot of people in our community know about it, and an example of this discussion went into, well, what is the I-69 ever gonna happen here in Shreveport? Is it gonna take 30-plus years like I-49? I mean, is this really something that we're gonna ever see? And I said, well, actually, it is a, you know, very viable project that's got multiple states involved in it, and I'm a huge proponent for the obvious reasons of what it would do to our community and the economic benefit it would provide. I do challenge anybody to Google cities in the United States that have three intersect, three interstates, a port, and a rail spur that is less than a million people. I am not aware of a single community that has all of those things going for it. So if you couldn't make the tie to this being a great economic development potential entity for our region, I think you're very short-sighted. So as this discussion went on further about I-69, I said, you know, I drive to Houston fairly often, and you can see along the sides of Highway 59 signs that say future I-69 quarter, very visible. They have, I mean, maybe 100 miles of road that they're bringing up to federal interstate standards. And then I noticed a sign recently where it showed an arrow going "Potential Route for I-69." So I got back and I said, well, Potential Route, it should be to the right heading towards the Louisiana border, but lo and behold, it was heading to north. So I then Googled I-69, and here's the website that showed up at the top, and yeah, I'm gonna bend down so I can see this clearly. Okay, as you can see, and I got my mouse, for those that don't see it at home, the bottom right-hand corner, here is the I-69 route. It stems from an NAFTA agreement essentially from Mexico and trade moving through the United States from Mexico all the way up to Canada. Any rate, here's the route. It was initially planned, or still planned, to then take a right turn into Louisiana and then proceed up in Arkansas from there. And you can see this group here has become very organized and put together their website to propose that it goes straight up through the state of Texas and intersect with I-30. Now, I mean, yes, is this a fancy drawing and that's all it is and a bunch of people on a website? Well, clearly they are better organized than we are today. I wanna just pull a couple of topics in here, look at our neighboring city to the west of us. Marshall continues I-369 route selection process. 200 citizens participated in an open house to review possible routes for I-69 through Harrison County. Obviously, maybe we've had those meetings here and they forgot to invite me, but I haven't seen this type of level at any of the small communities between, I'll call it Logan'sport and Haynesville, maybe if you said that's the route. Go down here, come even, even a little bit more dismayed as I read. Multi-state I-69 Congressional Caucus created. Members of the U.S. House of Representatives from Texas, Mississippi, Tennessee, Kentucky, and Indiana have joined to launch an Internet Interstate 69 Congressional Caucus. Obviously, absence here is Louisiana. Particularly disappointed in that. So I thought, well, maybe I've just fallen unfortunately on I-69 Texas and there must be an I-69 Louisiana. So let me put that, I-69 Louisiana. I may need my minutes here. Okay, so now I come to I-69 Shreveport, Louisiana, I69info.com. Clearly, our website is not at the level that theirs is. And I, there's, and I don't wanna say this is NLCOG's fault or anybody's fault, I'm just saying, community where we stand today on this. So talks about the corridor and where it goes near Shreveport and when it connects, what have you. I come down to official website, these links, right? Turn on this one. Bad request, invalid hostname, NLCOG.
That should've been the state's project page, is that correct?
Hard to tell. I think it may be one that was possibly supported by NLCOG. This one's definitely somewhere in the NLCOG. And then, I-69, I-49 from the chamber sends you to another page not found. Then I choose, okay, hold on, let me go down to Shreveport, Memphis, see what I get on this. Once again, has a pretty good description, and there has been some news about the El Dorado to Hotten portion, particularly with regard to Haynesville, and some new route studies there. Go down here and I think, well, I'm sure I can find a map. So I go down to official I-69 SIU 14 site, Arkansas, Louisiana, the only one that I see down here. Click on that, and I get a slot machine. Now, listen, that, the objective of the discussion is really that, I'm starting to get concerned that we have maybe lost our focus on this I-69, and there are groups out there that are certainly working hard to change it to their benefit, and I don't, it's not an administrative issue. I think, you know, community-wide or the four parishes involved have kind of lost sight on a prize here, and collectively, we need to get together and start focusing our efforts there. So we'll call that my day, so, project here.
Well, thank you for what is a very enlightening presentation and what also makes me feel very reassured about having put you as the Chair of the Infrastructure Committee. So perhaps that can help you to advocate for such a cause. It appears that it's in your wheelhouse of interest, and that is a good thing, because for our community, that is very important. So we appreciate that update and look for further discussions that we can talk about, what we might be able to do to support those efforts, so.
Great.
Certainly appreciate that. Councilman Jenkins, and do any other council members have anything at this point? If not, seeing none. Mayor Tyler, do you have any awards recognitions of distinguished guests or communications relative to city business?
We have two or three announcements today, and we also have our progress report on the street repair program.
Thank you very much.
Chairman and members of the council, our first announcement is Whole Foods Market is coming to town and will be giving local vendors an opportunity to place their products on the shelves. This is a tremendous opportunity for small businesses to partner with Whole Foods. A second announcement, businesses are coming online in our city, and we've had the privilege of attending a few ribbon cuttings the past few weeks. Some of them include the Marlene U Museum and Rainforest Foundation, Dunkin' Donuts, H&R Block Expanded, and another business called Your Credit Debt Checkup. I did not know about Ms. Love's business, but it's awfully good and refreshing to know that businesses are still coming online in our city. Our third announcement is the Shreveport Common Project has been given statewide recognition, and I know that most of you probably have read about it, but work done on a market analysis of the art and culture district in downtown Shreveport. And of course, we as the council and the city of Shreveport do partner with the Shreveport Common Project and those folks from SRAK. The city is in partnership on this project with Downtown Shreveport Development Corporation, Shreveport Regional Arts Council, and TMG Consulting. The team won the American Planning Association Louisiana Process Award for the 2014 market analysis showing their opportunities available in Shreveport Common. And my last recognition, actually, I'd like to recognize and thank Mr. Dale Sibley for his service to the citizens of Shreveport. Mr. Sibley has served eight years in the previous administration and roles that included Chief of Staff, Assistant CAO, and CAO. He's also been a great help to me as I've transitioned into office. Please join me in applauding Mr. Dale Sibley for his commitment and service.
Speech, speech, speech.
Speech.
Say something. Oh, really?
Usually, he's never speechless.
No, just thanks to the mayor, thanks to everybody who's been a part of this journey. You know, it's been, it's been quite, quite an adventure. It's been quite an opportunity to, you know, provide a service that not everybody gets the opportunity to do, and to have an impact on a city that I've adopted, that I've grown to love, that my children were born and raised here, and I intend to stay here. So to everyone who's done anything at any point to help me, to criticize me, to make me better, I say thank you. I appreciate it very much.
And now, members of the council, we have our dynamite duo, Mr. Robert Westerman and Mr. Stan Harris, who will present today the update and progress report on our street repair program.
Wonderful, thank you very much.
Mayor Tyler, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. Mayor's asked that I provide you a background and update status on our 2011 bond issue projects as well as other funded projects that we currently have underway. The 2011 GLB issued $31.7 million allocated for performing street improvements. There were five projects mentioned in the bond sale, and they included Knight Street, Murphy Street Bridge, citywide street improvements, sidewalk program, and the traffic signal system updates. The bond issue was divided into two phases of sales. The first sale occurred in 2011, and the second bond sale occurred in 2014. The 2011 sale included design for Knight Street and traffic signal system, and it included design and construction funding for the citywide street improvements as well as the sidewalk program. In the first sale, no funding was provided for Murphy Street Bridge replacement. On Knight Street, the design of the project is in final design phase. We have submitted comments back to the consultant for him to make corrections in the final plans. We anticipate construction, since the second sale provided construction funding, we anticipate construction to begin in 2015 or latter part of this year. The traffic signal system was also funded for design. The second sale provided for construction funds of that system. Again, we have submitted final comments to the design consultant. He is completing those plans. We anticipate construction to begin in 2015 on that project. The Murphy Street Bridge, construction of this project is scheduled to begin Monday, February the 2nd. We were able to negotiate with the LA DOTD to provide full 100% funding for construction of this bridge. Therefore, the initial $2.2 million that was set up in the bond sale can now be repurposed to other street improvements. Under the citywide improvement program, there were 35 projects that were voted on by council for inclusion under this program. The first sale of bond issue money included construction for 19 of the 35 total projects. As of this date, 18 of these projects have been completed, with one of the project currently still under construction. There were another 14 projects, since the second sale, another 14 projects will be placed under construction this year. Only two projects of the 35 originally voted on will be designed this year with construction to follow on one of them only. The other one, all we had set aside was design funding only. The next program that we have is the Street Special Revenue Fund. Under the Street Special Revenue Fund, they provided funding for two projects. These projects included the Minor Arterial Asphalt Program and the Pavement Asset Citywide Management Program. The Minor Arterial Asphalt Program was done in two phases. Phase one is complete. Of the 11 projects that were identified in phase one, all construction has been done on these 11 projects. Phase two is anticipated to begin construction in 45 days on the remaining nine arterial streets. Once complete, we will have addressed all of the minor arterial asphalt streets that have asphalt surface in Shreveport. The Pavement Asset Management Program. The city approved funding from the Street Special Revenue Fund for the purposes of providing an inventory and condition rating of all the streets in Shreveport, including the assets that are also associated with the roadway, with the streets, excuse me. These assets include signals, streetlights, curb and gutters, sidewalks, handicap ramps, things of these natures that you see on the street. We have, the company hired to do this work has now completed their work, and we are in the process of reviewing the metadata that they submitted to us as recently as of last week. Once complete, we will then input this program information into the new software program that we're currently writing the contract for, which is CityWorks. CityWorks will provide a pavement management, asset management, infrastructure management, and work order management for the city of Shreveport. This is a large undertaking, and the mayor's charged us with this task of developing a strategic plan for plan improvements, which will require coordination with other city departments and other governmental agencies. The other two funded projects that we have from other funds include Fern Avenue at East 70th Turn Lane. The consultant is completing design of this project. Construction will be done this year and will be coordinated with the construction of the Whole Foods store located on 70th Street. The other improvement we have is LSU-HSC Improvement Program. Currently, this project is funded for design only. The consultant is making corrections to the final plan review that the city is performing on this particular project. Funding will have to come from other sources. The Sidewalk Repair Program is part of the original...
I'm sorry to interrupt, but do we have a estimated timeframe of when they'll, when we'll have a completed design on that?
We anticipate design to be complete in the next three months.
Okay, great.
Now, the Sidewalk Repair Program, I'm gonna let Stan give you some background information of that. We coordinate that project very closely with Stan as far as the areas and the locations that are selected to be done. I have a attached list of the projects that were included in the Minor Asphalt Overlay and the Citywide Street Improvement Program for y'all's benefits. It shows a listing of all the projects that were done under those particular programs, and I will write that to you. I'm available to answer any questions.
Are you familiar with the piece of equipment that the city purchased with software to go over the streets to identify the status of the street?
The pavement management system?
Well, we, the program that was done to do the evaluation is called MicroPaver. It is a program that was developed by the Corps of Engineers and has also worked on and concerned with other companies develop a program. It does, they do an inventory of the street, they take pictures, they count the cracks, bumps, dips, busted panels, and everything, and through that program, it then develops a rating from 1 to 100 of the condition rating of that street.
Could you say that it was, be fair to say that piece of equipment cost $600,000?
That particular program is only $900. The actual field work to go out and collect the data costs $375,000 to also analyze that particular data. The other portion of that funding is to implement this data into the CityWorks program in order to develop the program, database, and information that we need for council, city administration, and including the public to be able to research this information and use this information.
Thank you. That is exciting, and I think something that you may wanna elaborate on is that, you know, once, once completed, the public will have access to, you know, to the system that can tell us about where assets are and what condition the pavement is in, is that correct?
The end result is to provide that, this CityWorks program ties into the GIS program the city currently has. And together, the database information on the CityWorks program tied into the pictorial analysis that you get from GIS, together it presents or can give you the information that you would need to know from a citizen standpoint if you log onto the site and get get, get that information.
Great, so people can see the, the condition of their street as it relates to the condition of the streets around them or in the community as a whole?
That is correct.
That's wonderful, yeah, and it's a, it's a helpful tool. So, any other questions? I see, I do have Stephanie, Councilwoman Lynch, did you have something on this or a different matter?
Different matter.
Okay, and then I did, Councilman Flurry.
What do you mean by assets?
Assets refers to sidewalks, signage, street lighting, you know, those, am I accurately reflecting?
Streetlights, street signals, traffic signs, sidewalks, curb and gutters, catch basins, manholes, fire hydrants, anything you physically see on the ground is an asset. There are also assets that are under the ground, and Barbara Featherstone is working with the water and sewer department to implement that program as a part of the CityWorks program.
Okay, absolutely. And then Oliver, is it to your hand?
Yeah, a couple of questions, specifics. Murphy Street Bridge, and it could be a little bit of a typo, so that's fair, said it was 2.2 million, and then we get back only 2.1 million or?
Yeah, Robert, 100,000 is left.
We are using 100,000 for prep work in and around the site.
As a part of the program, the all-system bridge program, the agency that's having the bridge work done is responsible for all the advanced preparatory work, right-of-way needs, or other issues associated with the construction of that project. And the $100,000 we set aside for that covers our cost to do that.
Awesome, okay, that's clear to me. Now, of course, I'm now in our projects by identified to be scheduled in 2015 that were in the second sale of the bonds. Now, I thought Ackard Street, the design of that project was funded in the first sale of the bonds.
That is correct.
But it's still in design today?
We're finishing the design of that.
Okay. Are we, do we have a kind of target of when we're going to start on that, when we'll be done with design and when the project?
We anticipate all these projects, the 14 projects in the second list, to be under construction this year. Some as early as perhaps in two months, and some to follow summer times, and some to follow a little later than that.
If, now, without, you know, holding to you specific dates, I think it would be useful for us to get a little bit more specificity on those projects in terms of timelines. I mean, I can either ask it through the infrastructure committee or just from you in this forum, because there are a lot of people that ask, I'm sure, with a lot of these projects that the design's already been.
The mayor has, oh, excuse me, mayor, go ahead.
I was going to say, if, if you would like, and I already plan to ask staff to come back as we progress with these projects and give you another status report in about four months, we plan to come back and do that anyway so that we'll have more specificity in terms of getting these street repairs done. We do have a sense of urgency, and I've said to staff that we're going to come back later on streets particularly in beautification, because we know that these are high priorities for our community. So we will be coming back, and perhaps at that time, we can have more specificity. The weather will have a lot to do with it, and so we're hesitant at this point to give you a definite timeline, but we are pushing to get most of these projects done or underway this year.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you. And I have next, Councilman Corbin, followed by Councilman Bradford.
Thank you. Robert, only because I'm speaking to the University Terrace Neighborhood Association United, the University Drive 70th Street intersection.
Yes, sir.
I know a lot of that design was done, I was told it was done in the first bond sale. Evidently, there's still a little bit left. When do we think that may go out?
We hope to anticipate to have that one probably out of construction in about four months. We're having to go back in and do a little touch-up work because AT&amp;T did some underground relocations.
Right, and we talked about that.
Of a system, and it necessitates to make a few changes.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
All right, Councilman Bradford.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess what, 75% of these projects have been completed? Is that what I'm looking at?
18 of the 35 have been completed, yes, sir.
Let me actually, now, again, I'm new, I'm trying to navigate myself through this. This, this, this street phase program, what was the criteria used to identify the streets that were, that will be repaired, upgraded?
The initial $21 million set aside for the citywide street program was divided into seven different district categories. Each district, or each council member had $3 million in select projects to be done under that program.
Okay, yeah, and I was constantly with the chairman, and the original, I was looking at also the, the minor asphalt overlay streets.
Yes, sir.
Those were selected how?
Actually, those were identified as a part of the transportation program that recently completed, the condition rating that was done. It was selected to do the work on the minor arterial asphalt program, and the reason being is money was available through the street special revenue fund. Arterials had not had the attention paid to them that other local streets have had over the last several years, and it was the infrastructure committees, in reality, that made the recommendation to look at doing the arterial roads or minor arterial roads as a part of that program.
Okay. And may be able to shed some further insight on that. So what happened at the time, obviously, there was a debate about the, you know, what might be a larger street program that the former administration was suggesting, and so the infrastructure committee determined that while that debate is going on, there are, there is work that could be being done, and so designed a program that would tackle the, the minor arterials. When we looked at the classification of roads and how many were impacted and, you know, what was maybe a doable goal, that was a goal that stood out as some, a place where we could make a tremendous amount of impact on roads that had quite a bit of traffic on them. And so, they were selected and broken into two phases, hoping that the second phase would get funded, which it did, and so that's the work that you'll see commencing in a couple of months now, I guess.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, and I want to refer to the mayor on, as we move forward, and I think movement on the street projects will be a continual endeavor in relation to identifying future projects and streets.
Well, the mayor has asked, the mayor has asked us to try to develop a comprehensive strategic plan to address those needs.
Wonderful, he's a wonderful mayor. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The second half of our presentation really deals with the new funding for the year 2015, and I'll be talking about the dollars that are available to us as of today and how we propose to allocate those. What you have is a sheet there that kind of gives you a summary of all the different programs that we have. This year, we anticipate allocating somewhere between $21 to $23 million in street improvements, okay? This will basically allocate all the dollars that we have available at this particular time. And a parallel path with that, as Robert indicated, we'll be working with, with yourselves as well as the mayor, and developing an overall strategic plan to deal with our streets. Right now, we have a backlog of over $400 million. So even though we're doing 20-plus million dollars' worth of improvements here, we still have a significant backlog that needs to be addressed, and we have, we have to come together as a group to develop that strategy and move forward with it. But let me walk through the, the proposed funding areas that we have right now. Our intent is to, over the next four to six weeks, to come back to the infrastructure committee with recommendations on each one of these, okay? This is a little different than what we've done in the past. In the past, we, we worked directly with individual council members. This time, we're going to come to you as a group with recommendations for your review and your comments, okay? We think that will probably speed the process along and get us through the, through the program. To start off with, we've got the local and collector asphalt street program. Each year, we are allocated roughly about $750,000 in public works budget to do local and collector streets for overlay. These are not rebuild projects, these are basically overlay projects. They are intended to, to extend the life of the roadway itself, and we focus on mainly the, the local and collector streets. This past year, from 2014, we have roughly about $320,000 that we'll be carrying over, and that will, if you add that to the 750s allocated in this year's current budget, that is roughly about $1 million, a little over $1 million. So we'll be presenting that to the infrastructure committee as well. The sidewalk repair program, there's about $3 million in that right now. A million dollars was allocated with the first issuance of the sale of the bonds, then the second sale, an additional $2 million was, was made available with that. We had had some conversations with some of the council members about this particular funding source, and we had, we still have that information, but what we would like to do is do something a little different with that. What we would like to do is focus on some of the broad areas that I've bullet pointed here on the, on the handout. One, the first thing is our downtown area brick pavers. We've got a lot of those that are in disrepair, they're settling out, and there are liability issues for the city, and so we want to take care of those as part of this program. Second thing we want to do is, we want to address the areas around our schools and our parks. These are high pedestrian areas, these are some of the things that we probably have already talked about with some of the council members, but we want to make sure that the sidewalks around those areas are safe and for our pedestrian traffic. We also have high pedestrian areas throughout the city as well. We, here's something, the pedestrian trails and sidewalks, we want to make sure that we maintain what we have, and so we'll be allocating a small amount of the dollars toward, toward that effort. And then we have our sidewalk out of repair list, and that list is, to give you an idea of, there's about $20 million that have been, that's identified on that list. And so, it's going to, that's going to have to enter into the long-range strategy as well, how we deal with that. But for right now, what we want to do is use the remaining of these dollars to, to deal with that.
Can I interrupt here?
Yes, I have a question as well.
Because, obviously, in 2011, and then in 2012 and 2013, you gave us, requested our list for sidewalk repairs. Now, I understand that maybe not all the councilmen provided those, and I know there's some problem, and I, you know, I don't believe those are the councilmen in front of you now, but there were some that were slower to provide that data. Are you suggesting that those, that we're not going to do those and do this instead, or you're going to go through that backlog that haven't been done?
We're going to take a look at all information that you guys had provided previously and include that as part of the process. We're not going to throw it away, no, no, no.
Okay, but there was definitely an assumption on, at least on three of us here, that those would get done the moment we started sidewalk projects. You're putting us in a little bit of an awkward position in that we've been telling people for the better part of two to three years that the sidewalk, when you asked us to come up with a certain?
We will honor that commitment.
Okay.
Thank you. That being said, I am, I am encouraged to hear a suggestion about sort of a strategic approach that considers where high pedestrian traffic is. You know, I do see quite a bit, my district does happen to have a lot of public facilities, centers of government, high, places of high employment, you know, and so there is a lot of pedestrian areas that I, where I notice that could, you know, be a great improvement to a large number of people. Of course, we all notice, especially those of us who represent older neighborhoods, with clay soil and being near a river, we're going to have cracks and we're going to have foundational issues on some of our sidewalks. And so there's need for repair throughout the sidewalk system, as you've acknowledged. But I do think that having a, you know, having a strategic plan in place and a focused area of suggestion is probably going to get us to the end goal quicker than us listening to the loudest voice of, you know, one, one need after another, because there are so many needs, and we really do need to begin to prioritize these in a way that we can actually get a, get a grasp on the situation. So I'm pleased to hear that approach. That is a, that is a good suggestion, though I realize I may be relinquishing some ability to input on that, but at the end, we'll get that, so, so that is, that is good. The pedestrian trails, you know, one thing I suppose I've noticed is, we do have areas in town where you can see a sidewalk was never built, but that has not stopped the pedestrian foot traffic, and there are paths that have been cut across grass just from foot traffic being there for so long, over so many years. That may be something we want to consider. I mean, where are those places where our sidewalk infrastructure was never completed, and would it benefit us to complete those? You know, I, I can certainly think of a few examples of that where, you know, if we've got sidewalk on two-thirds of a street, let's have sidewalk on the whole street. I think those might be, you know, a benefit to look at as well when we consider that.
We will do that.
And now I have on the list, did you have anything? Okay, Councilwoman Lynch, Councilman Bradford, and Councilman Flurry.
I think at some point, I mean, I'm going to have to look all this stuff over. I'm sure I'll have some questions. And, because y'all are a little over my head right now when you start talking about arterial and collector streets and all that, I don't really know what that means, but I do understand Hollywood Avenue, Jewella, Greenwood Road, Kennedy, you know, I understand that. Close to list my mama got, every pothole, I think, in the district. Got that. Okay, so I'll be getting with somebody.
You can get with either myself or Robert, we'd be more than happy.
Okay.
We can come together, we usually work pretty good as a team.
Order some southern classic chicken, we can sit down and, and talk about this so I can understand. Okay. Let me see, on this second page here, though, it's got here for District F had $770,000 allocated.
Yeah, I'll be coming to that. What that is, I'll go ahead and jump ahead real quick, but I'll go, I'll come back and finish the presentation. What that is, is that, Robert kind of hit on it a little bit earlier, as part of the 2011 bond issue, each district was given $3 million to spend, and in that particular case, I believe District F left about approximately several hundred and $70,000 that was not allocated. So you have that, you have that money that's available to you.
So that's mine, nobody's going to touch that.
That is correct.
Okay, so then y'all go to this meeting and do all of that, that's, that's not going to be touched, that's?
That's, that's right.
Okay.
And the G dollars, that was, that was 350,000, and that's Councilman Mo, and that's in your district as well.
Okay, so it says here, list of projects will be developed, who, who develops that list?
We'll make the recommendations and we'll present those.
Okay, to the infrastructure committee or the council person?
Both.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay. Let me move on. Street maintenance program?
No, I was ready to finish.
Okay, and, and I will, just, as a, just point of information for the council members, in the presentation here that was provided from engineering, there are city council districts listed by these streets. Some of those council districts, those are based on the council districts that were in the, in place when these were passed. Some of those districts have been changed and moved a little bit, and that may not accurately reflect what's in your district today. So just as a point of reference, if you see something that looks incorrect, it is based on the former council.
And Mr. Chair, Chairman, just for the record, District E doesn't give anything for phase one, and only one project could face to that, just for the record.
All right. Does or didn't?
Does not. Didn't in phase one and does not in phase, and only gets one in phase two. Stan, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay. The next area was street maintenance program, and there, in the budget, Public Works receives approximately $1.5 million each year in its maintenance budget. And the intent was, that was a recommendation that we made to council, and you guys honored that, and we certainly appreciate that. And what we've been doing is using those dollars to basically deal with concrete joint replacements and concrete panel replacements, basically on the arterial street system. And what you'll, what you'll find out is that as we go through this process of identifying projects, we usually will tend to target the higher volume streets first and work our way down. But as we develop a strategy for dealing with our streets, we'll be working all the way across the, the spectrum, from local streets as well as arterial streets, because they all have to be addressed. Our intent is not to leave anyone behind, so, but, and this 2015 year, in terms of street maintenance, we'll be identifying additional projects on the arterial street system where we need to replace concrete joints as well as concrete panels.
Okay.
There was a, those that were here earlier, there was a list of other projects on that list that we had, and we'll be basically following after that, that same list.
Okay.
Then we have our special revenue fund, currently has a balance of $9 million that's available to us in 2015. Those of you not familiar with it, this is the increase that we received from the SWEPCO franchise fee. In the past years, we've received somewhere between 6.5, almost up to $7 million a year in this fund, and we'll be allocating these dollars toward projects as well. These dollars are pretty much the most open and unlimited in terms of what we can actually use them for, so, this is, and this was also part of the, the effort that I think that the previous council did when they allocated. they allocated these funds for this particular special purpose.
Stan, if I recall, the street maintenance, when you referred to the, there was an, y'all had recommended an increase in that, which we allowed, but I'm just trying to, for memory sake, I believe 50% of that comes from a street special revenue fund, and 50% of that was already provided through an existing millage, is that correct?
No, my understanding is all 1.5 of that comes from a street fund.
It is from street special revenue. I thought, I thought I was remembering something that existed before that, but anyway, thank you for correcting that.
All right. The next area is the Murphy Street Bridge Fund, and Robert's already talked a little about that. We have roughly about $1.9 million available there, and that was a result of engineering, working with the state to, get the state to pay for 100% of the construction of the Murphy Street Bridge, and that actually resulted in $2.2 million. There were 100,000 of that's been committed for some prep work for barricades and things like that associated with the Murphy Street Bridge, and an additional 200,000 has been proposed for use associated with the Lake Street project itself, which leaves us roughly about $1.9 million. And we've talked about the unallocated 2011 Geo Bond Fund as well. And there's also some, we think somewhere between $4 to $6 million available in premium bond funds, and we're still trying to define that, make sure we have the right number. So we think we'll be able to allocate this year somewhere between $21 to $23 million in projects. We think that'll make a significant impact on what we're doing here in Shreveport, and we look forward to working with you in those efforts. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
I have got Councilman Bradford, followed by Councilman Flurry.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Harris, and my questions are pretty much for information only.
Yes, sir.
With the oil prices where they are, is that advantageous to us as we proceed in overlay street?
It'll probably have a significant impact on the asphalt. I haven't looked at the prices closely, I'm not sure. Robert, you have any additional data on it or not, but, but as those oil prices go down, it should impact the cost of asphalt.
Robert's coming forward.
Okay.
Impact them in a positive manner.
It is good for us, yeah. I asked the same question the other day, I did get an answer.
With regards to that, I spoke to a couple of the asphalt contractors. The asphalt market is such a spot market that it's impossible for them to show significant savings sometimes on the price of asphalt as a result of the price of oil, because they're trying to guess what the asphalt's going to cost tomorrow. And so we've had some reduction in our asphalt price, but it's nowhere near what you see in the price of oil.
Okay. And my other question is, and I was speaking to the clerk last week, and I was wondering, in Shreveport, are there any other surfaces besides concrete and asphalt overlay?
The city, approximately 25 years ago, there used to be a third type of surface. It was called old great streets, old dirt streets. The city got real aggressive in eliminating every street of that nature, so that now either the street is an asphalt surface or is a concrete surface street.
You said, Mr. Harris, that your estimate would be, if we was to address every street issue in Shreveport, we talking $400 million?
Yes, that was our last estimate that we had. Now that we've got the pavement management system, Robert's in the process of working on, looking at that, revisiting that, taking a look at what the actual number would be based on the data that we have.
Well, I mean, I understand that, but I said that as a prelude to saying that in our lifetime, that would never be done, $400 million in streets. So, let me ask you this, and are you familiar with the streets in District A, especially within the MLK area?
Yes.
Okay. Which I would believe, without being comfortable, that those streets are the worst in Shreveport.
Right. There's some of the worst streets we have in the district.
Right.
A lot of them are old streets that were probably annexed in, they were converted over from gravel to, I mean, from dirt to gravel to asphalt, probably. I don't know the history, the background, but that's generally how it normally works on things like that. And they don't have proper base, they're not wide enough, and so those will take some, most cases, probably reconstruction.
And that's where I'm going, that I, somehow, I want to see that we get the biggest bang for our buck as it relates to streets in that area. I mean, every resident, that's their issue, I need to put streets, holes, but even in the major streets and bus lines and so forth are very deployable. So let me ask you this, can you, can you look at and research if there are any options for those streets besides the two surfaces that you've mentioned? And see if there's opportunities where we can get more mileage for our dollar in some areas? Because again, to go year after year, nothing happens, and in the language that you're talking, there will, you know, obviously be some street that would, unless something like that, we'd never get there.
Well, there are some things we can do with the current street program we have. What we can do is we can, you know, rebuild that base. Robert's, he's had very good success in coming back with materials and building up those base, and then putting additional asphalt on top of that. In other words, essentially incorporating that existing asphalt into a base with another material added to it to help strengthen it and replacing it. One of the things we probably will be looking at is not necessarily improving every street to curbs and gutters. It's okay for us to have unimproved streets, but with good, strong asphalt or good, strong concrete as a driving surface. So there's lots of options, and that's why it's important for us to develop a strategy, overall strategy, as a city, on how we address our streets.
Okay, thank you. And I mentioned something to the clerk, and I would like to meet with you, to mention it to you, and see if it's legal.
Okay. I may have to bring in an attorney.
Always good to be... Not legally in the sense of, but legally in the sense of, does it fit our standard as, in our street?
We'd be more than happy to sit down with you or any other council member.
Well, thank you very much, and Councilman Bradford, you know, I think your statement about the condition of streets in the MLK area, I think is supported by the pavement management system. It does reflect that those streets are, do pose some of the biggest challenges in our community, as well as pockets throughout a few of the other council districts. I know District E does have some pockets of very difficult streets, as well as really most districts. There's one or two districts that are fortunate to have a large number of good-conditioned streets, but most districts do have some pockets of bad, bad streets, but certainly in the MLK area is most certainly one of those identified areas that has quite a few that are very low on the PCI scale. And so it is good to see that our system seems to accurately be reflecting what our citizens are reporting, so that is good.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
All right. Do any council members have any questions or concerns related to property standards that we might need to call Ms. Barnella up? If not, and seeing none, I will move on to Mr. Sweeney. Oh, you know what? I apologize, Mr. Sweeney has just stepped out for a moment, but in the interim, I forgot that Councilwoman Lynch did have a statement not related to the streets report, but to other comments from the mayor.
Yes, Dale, you know you weren't going to get about it easy. There are some people that you can really remember exactly when you met them, you know, where you met them, how you met them, and then there are other people that seem like you've kind of known them all your life, and Dale is one of those people. I don't really remember when we met or where we met, but it just seems like I've known you, you know, all my life. And so I, you know, just wanted to personally thank you for your service over the last eight years. During that time, your hair never turned gray.
Only transparent.
You know, he always had a smile, and he had the nicest way of telling me no than anybody that I've ever met, which, you know, is a hard thing to do, but some kind of way he managed to do that. Of course, it didn't hurt that he was chocolate and ball, you know, so that's always a good thing. But thank you, Dale, I just wanted to.
Thank you.
Make sure.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
And, let's see, I'm sorry, Councilman Bonner.
Just to piggyback on Ms. Lynch, I heard Dale say that he was, he was going to stay in Shreveport. I just wanted, for the record, what district you staying in?
You are my council.
Good, good. Well, and I certainly do want to express thanks, and, you know, I realize that many in the, in the general community may not know, but when somebody contacts us on council, generally our first point of contact is the CAO, and so Dale has, and I can be a little persistent, and I can report a lot of things, and I have to appreciate and thank Dale for the manner in which he deals with what is a high volume and a lot of activity, and a lot going on, and a lot coming at you from different directions, and you always maintain calm, graceful demeanor about it, and always great to follow up and work with you, and, you know, really have always appreciated your, your sort of level-headed approach to what is not always a level-headed feeling role. So that is much appreciated, and look forward to hearing whatever it is that you do next in your future endeavors. So we are just very thankful for your service. And also did want to acknowledge, just as the mayor's representative on the Shreveport Common team from the council, the APA recognition is just another in a series of recognitions of the Shreveport Common project, and it has been recognized in national studies and publications in multiple areas, and, you know, really shows a, what can happen when different branches of government, different types of communities, different people that come from different vantage points sit together at a table and say what's best for all of us. And so it's a project I've been proud to work on and look forward to continuing to serve in that capacity, and it's really one that I think reflects very brightly on our city. So glad to see that that is recognized by those outside of our city as well. If there are no other comments, I don't know if Mr. Sweeney, and I have not seen him return, so I think we will move on. There is no public hearing. Oh, there's Mr. Sweeney right there.
Disappeared, but he's back.
I know. Mr. Sweeney, I think we are ready for your report.
I got called out for an emergency thing.
Perfect timing, just as you went in.
That's always the way it works. Primarily, what I want to say about the master plan update for you today is, as you know, we've been in the process of reviewing the Unified Development Code, which is one of the things that we're working very diligently to make a reality for this city, truly one of the most important steps toward implementing the master plan that was approved back in 2010. Where we are today is that I have received a second draft of the Unified Development Code. It incorporates all of the comments and changes that both the city departments and the parish departments have asked for. We've been doing a very intense review, had over 130 comments and adjustments that we made. Now I'm in the process of reviewing that draft. Once I have completed that draft review, I plan to schedule a two-day session at the end of February, February the 26th and 27th, in which I will complete the next step of the internal review. And what that will entail is that my consultants, Camero's, will come in for a series of presentations. And in that two-day period, we plan to schedule a time with both the Metropolitan Planning Commission Board, the ZBA, the Master Plan Committee, certain officials from the parish, as well as a presentation to the mayor and the new CAO and his staff. The opportunity then is to bring everybody up to par on what is being recommended and proposed in the UDC. It's very important that everyone be on the same page after we do that, because then, if everything is in, is in the right pattern, my plan is to go out for public input with, for the UDC. So I will actually send out an amended form of the UDC, and we will have that available for public input and review. The goal right now, and that goal can change, is to try to do that public outreach in the month of March. And that will entail a series of open houses set in different locations throughout the city and the parish. It will involve a series of targeted presentations to key organizations and civic groups that have a major role in this process, so that we can get full input from them. And all of that has to take place very strategically before we ever come back here before you to ask you to recommend, for you to approve the Unified Development Code. There's a lot of steps involved. Our goal, and I've been saying this from the outset, is to try to have this thing approved by the end of this year. Certainly, if I can make it faster than that, I will, but as we all know, politics and a lot of issues can come up that can delay the process. But my goal is to get it done as quickly as possible, because once we've done that, it will give us a foundation to build a house on, as I refer to it, as to really make a huge difference in the way we conduct business in this city. And that is definitely an objective I think all of you want, and to have the rules in order, and there's no, no contradiction, and there's no added things that nobody knew about. We've got to get all of that off the table so we have something, so the development community can have something they can work with, yet raise our standards high enough that we can expect better projects and higher-quality projects for our community.
Wonderful. Well, thank you very much for that update. Are there any immediate questions from the council? I know that the UDC is something we've been working on quite some time.
Yes.
And it is, I think, the type of thing that is worth taking your time on to get right.
Yes.
You know, the adoption of the Unified Development Code completes nearly 70% of the short-term objectives in the Great Expectations Master Plan, so.
Tremendous amount, absolutely.
Yeah, so this is a very significant piece of legislation that they're working on, and certainly appreciate the efforts of the MPC and the consultant on the project, and looking forward to hearing more from you.
Sure.
Thank you for the update.
Thank you.
Okay, at this point, we have no public hearings, so we'll continue to adding legislation to the agenda. Mr. Thompson, do you have any legislation to be added?
One item, if added, it will be Resolution 16. It's a resolution to request the United States Environmental Protection Agency to ensure that the 15 million pounds of M6 at Camp Mendon is disposed of safely, to involve local communities and officials in the process, and to otherwise provide with respect thereto...
Some move to add?
Second.
Mr. Chairman, we need to determine whether or not there are any people...
Oh, that's correct. Thank you. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak in favor of adding this item to the agenda?
The one likely candidate has probably left.
Yes, I know, I see she's out of the room. I see she may want to have spoken towards it, but is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak against adding this item to the agenda?
What? Speak against what?
Speak against adding the item to the agenda regarding Camp Mendon? Okay. Okay, that being said, it is now appropriate to entertain a motion, or?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So we have a motion from Councilman Everson, second by Councilwoman Lynch, and we could cast bets. We are waiting.
Mr. Brett? Oh, thank you.
He's got it. Okay, that is unanimous passage to add to the agenda, and there's no other legislation to be, to be added, correct? Okay, we have no public comments for this portion of public comments, we do have some for the later portion of public comments, but none under this item. So we will move on to confirmations and appointments, and we have the following executive appointments for confirmation. We will be considering Deputy City Attorney William Bradford and Chief Administrative Officer Brian Crawford. So at this point in time, oh, thank you.
I am happy to make a motion for those two.
For confirmation?
Confirmation. Second. There we go. Chairman? You can call for discussion.
And just for the record, I've got a motion from Councilman Jenkins, second from Councilman Flurry, and for confirmation of both appointments.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to speak on the motion.
Correct.
And I would like to have, and I spoke with him yesterday, Council, Deputy Attorney William Bradford to come forward.
Good afternoon again, council.
Afternoon, how are you this day?
Doing fine.
And I said this yesterday, Mr. Chairman, I'm just going to... And I said this yesterday, Mr. Chairman, I'm just going to reiterate that for the assumption of the public that this gentleman, William Charles Bradford Jr., is not my son. And I would have to do some research to see what level of relationship we are, if we are any at all. I did.
It's bad I got too.
What are you saying, Kevin Olson? But anyway, I just wanted to say again that I'm proud of the mayor's choice of you. I look forward to working with you and I just trust that you will do well and just carry on the work that is designed for you and your new role as Deputy City Attorney.
Thank you, Councilman.
Any remarks you would like to make?
Again, thank you all very much for this opportunity. And again, I look forward to serving the citizens of Shreveport.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Hope if he would come forward, Mr. Crawford.
Council, Mayor.
Mr. Crawford, thank you for coming back and coming back up. We had a very well discussion yesterday and I appreciate your candor and your responses to the questions that I asked.
Enjoyed it very much.
I told you yesterday that I would have a few more today.
Absolutely.
It won't be long. I just want to cover a couple of things with you.
Yes, sir.
You said something yesterday that really lingered with me and one of my questions in your response, you said that I have a heart to serve.
Yes, sir.
And I appreciated that statement. I appreciate the fact that the mayor also has a heart to serve. And I know that Bunny Moore has a heart to serve.
She does.
At this stage in our city's history, that's what we need. We need more city leaders, we need more city workers, more city citizens to have hearts of service.
I agree.
And I appreciate that from you. Again, Mr. Crawford, my, again, my background is not in public bureaucracy government. One of the things that bothers me more in this type of work is the waste that's involved. Time and time again, we see ourselves, not only this government but the other government, pitching pennies and throwing away dollars. And I'm going to hope that we can sort of address that issue and be very prudent in how we use and spend taxpayers' dollars.
I agree with that.
And I know that in the mayor, and thank you, Mayor, the mayor told us two weeks ago that she was talking with you and the possibilities if you're coming back.
She's quite a salesperson.
She is, yes, she is. And I'm sure in the conversations you had with her, she shared with you her visions and.
She did.
And her priorities and things that she wants to see accomplished. She's been very articulate in saying that. I think in even Sunday's paper, she was very forthcoming in things that she wanted to see done. Let me ask you, in the conversation with the mayor, and I understand you had a very nice position over there in Plano.
I did.
Did you have any expectations and visions of what you wanted to see happen when you came back to Shreveport?
I think certainly. You know, when I say the mayor is quite a salesperson, it's true. I was very well established in Plano as the fire chief. I had a great department working for a great city. And, but this is my hometown and I have a love for Shreveport that did not leave me when I left here. And so when I was presented with an opportunity to return, I wanted to make sure that, just like yourself, that I had some assurances that we were going to be doing some really great things over the next four years before I left the position I was in, to assume, as Councilman Everson said so eloquently while ago, a position that is not always the most envious in the city as they're pulled in a lot of different directions, as Dale has navigated so eloquently over the last eight years. It's a challenging role. It's a challenging position. But sitting down with Mayor Tyler and listening to her vision, her talk about strategic planning, which is in my wheelhouse with the fire departments when I was with Assistant C A O here, talking about citizen involvement, empowering employees, cleaning up the city, taking care of the city business, you know, questions that I had for her were, can I take my coat off? Can I roll up my sleeves and can we really get some work done? Because I'm a type A personality. I have a high standard for myself. I have a high standard of expectation for the employees who serve under me. I hold myself accountable to the citizens, to this mayor, to this council, and I also hold my directors accountable. And would I have the ability to do that? And she assured me that I would. And so I'm sold. Looking at the configuration of this council, I was very pleased to see those who got elected. And I think that, we said it yesterday, I think we are in a situation of urgency. I think we hit our critical precipice in our city's history to either make a decision, are we comfortable with where we are today, or do we really want to do the hard work that's required by not only public service, school districts, neighborhoods, small businesses, and investing in this community and really making it the best it can be. All communities have challenges. Plano, as much of an economic dynamo as that community is, had some of the same challenges that we face here with our streets, sewer, water, maintaining public parks, the streets that you mentioned in your district. The fact is, we, as all great leaders do, as you have done, as this mayor has done, they've recognized that and they've not hidden from the challenges that we have in our city and pretend that they don't exist. We've brought them into the forefront. We've brought them into the public arena. We're not afraid to discuss them. The next step is, what are we going to do about it? And I believe this mayor's vision, this council, is part of a team that I want to be part of that makes a huge difference and we can look back in four years and say, wow, they really made an impact on the city and it's a better place than it was four years ago.
Thank you. Very, very well spoken. I just want to say, and this, I'm going to lead into my end statement, is that in my campaign, I also ran on some objectives and a vision. Do you know the makeup, the racial makeup of this city?
I do. It's 54% African-American, it's 41% Caucasian, and it's got another 2% or 3% of mixed races, Hispanic and Asians.
Are you aware that we have a fair share program in place?
I do.
Are you aware that in spite of having a fair share program in place, and when it was implemented back in 2001, it had specific goals, and it was intended, I was at the table, it was intended to assist minority businesses, but more importantly, the city procurement was to be reflective of the makeup of the city.
Yes, sir.
And that's not happening. I was wondering, do you have any specific plans on how we can increase that participation?
Obviously, that's the mayor's decision and judgment. I know that the qualifying amount is 20% for all those major projects. And I think the standard is that we solicit with those contractors who are awarded the bid. We work with them through the fair share program, through the mayor's office, and ensure that they've done everything possible to be inclusive of those D B Es, minority businesses, women-owned businesses, that they are fully engaged in that process. And that includes solicitation of our local businesses that they have the ability to be part of that process and that they understand the process more than anything else. And so I'm as engaged in that process as I was when I was here as the Assistant C A O, as I was when I was the Water and Sewer Director in the interim capacity for a year. Lot of projects went out. And I'll be continued, our continued involvement with that process and ensuring that we're doing everything that we can to support those local businesses, those D B Es that want to participate, that offer a good quality product, that can help us when we have contracts that are awarded.
Thank you. And I spoke to the mayor about this and the mayor, and if possible, I would like to meet with you, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Be glad to.
The C A O and the Fair Share Coordinator, to suggest some things. But I met with some minority contractors on last Thursday night.
Yes, sir.
They are under the feeling that the reason that the fair share program is not working as it should be is because the lack of a disparity study. Are you familiar with a disparity study?
I am.
I'll further that in the conversation that we have.
Sure.
Okay. But lastly, Mr. Crawford, as the mayor mentioned earlier, she's very busy.
She is.
Since she's been sworn in, every week, I know sometimes two or three times a week, she's doing external work. She's cutting ribbons, I've seen her.
Yes.
Hugging some babies, you know. I showed up at a function on Sunday and lo and behold, there she is, opening up a new business.
Right.
So her external work is going to continue and she's going to allow on you, and we're going to allow on you.
Yes, sir.
To keep the train running.
Yes, sir.
In her absence, and keep it running on time. I was talking to the, and to Councilman Flurry on last week also.
Yes, sir.
And I made this statement, and I'm going to make it to you, and I hope you understand what I'm saying. Even though you're responsible for the train, we pay the freight. And we just believe.
Sure.
That we all have a say and we'll go on the train.
Absolutely.
Your policy for the council to participate and offer suggestions, would you have an open door policy in that regards?
More than welcome. I'll not only engage the council, I'll probably be speaking with the council often and maybe more times than they want to hear from me. So I can promise you that that open door policy is a 24/7 venue for you or any other council who wants to discuss any matter that's important enough for you. It's important enough for me to take time to listen, absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Jim.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I believe we are just waiting on your vote, Mr. Bradford. And that is a seven-vote unanimous passage for confirmation. Congratulations to both of you. Okay, at this time, we are at the consent agenda. And as I reminded everybody yesterday, this is going to be our first time using this in a long time, so bear with us if we have a few changes. But there are no items under consent agenda for introduction. But Mr. Thompson, will you continue with the items to be adopted?
Mr. Chairman, before the consent agenda is considered, and for the reasons discussed yesterday, a motion to remove Resolution 15 from the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Postponed and placed it on the regular agenda for the next meeting is in order.
So moved by the chair and second, Councilman Corbin. I would have heard.
I'm sorry, Councilman Corbin, you said?
Correct.
Yes.
Councilman Bowman and Flurry, it hasn't registered your vote yet. There we go. That is seven, for seven yays, unanimous approval.
Mr. Chairman, a motion to adopt all of the remaining resolutions in section B is in order.
Second.
And I've got a motion from Councilman Jenkins, second from Councilman Bradford. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, we're now under regular consent, regular agenda legislation, resolutions on second reading and final passage, of which will require only one reading. The first is Resolution Number Seven. It authorizes the acceptance of a donation of a title sponsorship for the 2015 North Louisiana Economic Development.
And that is a motion by the chair, second by Councilman Jenkins. And that is a unanimous passage.
Resolution Eight authorizes the execution of a retainer agreement with Wenchell and Joseph L L C and otherwise provides with respect.
Second. That is a motion by Councilman Corbin, second by Councilman Jenkins. Please vote. And it looks like we've got unanimous passage of that.
Chairman, they are in the audience, just to let you know.
There they are, back there, hiding behind our new deputy city attorney. Good to see you all and congratulations.
Mr. Chairman, the item that was added, Resolution to Request the United States Environmental Protection Agency to Ensure That 15 Million Pounds of M6 Can Be Adopted.
And that's a motion by the chair and second by Councilman Bowman. We've got unanimous passage.
There are no resolutions to be introduced. We're now under introduction of ordinances, not to be adopted prior to February the 10th. Number Six declares the city's intention to acquire full ownership of certain adjudicated properties for community developments, Concordia Place Project. Number Seven closes and abandons a portion of the dedication by Elaby Church Road and the Elaby Road Estates, Unit Four subdivision, in Section Eight Township, 16 North, Range 13 West. Ordinance Eight amends Chapter 106 of the code by rezoning property located on the north side of John Cole Drive, 430 feet east of Hillary Huckabee, and the south side of Martin Luther King Drive, 760 feet east of Hillary Huckabee, from R1H S P I two, urban one-family residence, industrial park overlay district to B1 S P I two buffer business industrial park overlay district with site plan approval.
Remove.
Ordinance Number Nine amends Chapter 106 of the code, rezoning property located on the north side of Rutherford Street, 300 feet west of Fairfield Avenue, from S P I Highland Urban Conservation District to B1 Buffer Business District with site plan approval.
Their motion to.
So moved on the introduction.
All right, I've got a motion from Councilman Jenkins and a second from Councilman Corbin. Cast your votes and we have got unanimous vote.
Chairman, we're now under ordinances on second reading and final passage. Ordinance One amends the 2015 Riverfront Development Fund Budget. This is for economic development.
So moved.
Second.
So a motion by the chair, second by Councilwoman Lynch. Is there any discussion? If not, and we have got unanimous approval.
Ordinance Two amends the 2015 Community Development Fund Budget. This is a cleanup ordinance from the.
So moved, second. We'll give the motion to Councilwoman Lynch and second to the chair. And I'll say we have good timing. Is there any discussion?
I expressed some issues about this yesterday and I don't feel that I need to belabor that. So, you know, hopefully, you know, that these, that the projects, or the specific project in discussion yesterday, you know, we do find a funding source for the project and, you know, the efforts, the considerable financial efforts of putting forth, the actual design phase is not wasted. So that should be a collective effort for all of us up here, all for the project. I just want to make sure we have the funding to do it, so.
And I think all votes are in. We have got unanimous passage.
Ordinance Three amends the 2015 General Fund Budget. This appropriates the fund for the Deputy City Attorney.
And we have got a motion from Councilman Corbin, second from Flurry. Did I hear that correctly?
We got a pay in now?
I guess so. He's not doing it for free. All right, that is unanimously approved. On to the next.
Ordinance Number Four amends the 2015 General Fund Budget appropriating funds.
Second.
And that is motion by the chair, second by Councilwoman Lynch. And is there any discussion? If not, please cast your vote. If not, please cast your votes. We've got unanimous approval.
Ordinance Five amends the 2015 Capital Improvements Budget. This is for the Lake Street Railroad Crossing Project.
So moved.
Second.
And that is motion by the Chair, second by Councilman Bowman, and that is unanimously approved.
Chairman, I don't, I'm not aware, the item that's being ta, has been tabled to be removed, it needs to be removed, I'm not aware of any reason to do so. All of the appeals that can be handled on these two meetings were handled yesterday.
And do we have, do we need to read, I believe there's a one from the MPC that's not to be heard today, but do we need to read it into the record today?
I can, Mr. Chairman, this case number C-8-15, appeal of application for AFS LLC Professional Park Inc., located on the north side of Elberwood Drive, 440 feet east of Elaby Road, B2 Neighborhood Business District, for site plan approval with office building use. And that cannot, as you said, will not be considered in the February of the year.
You stole his clerk's report by forcing him to give it. I know, I know. I need to leave him some more time under the clerk's report to wow us with his own impromptu. But, well, thank you for, thank you for that. I believe we are now at the reports from officers' boards and committees, and I have Councilman Corbin.
Thank you, Councilman, Chairman Emerson. I'd like to call a meeting of the Audit Finance Committee for Monday, February 9th, at 2:00 p.m. for our administrative conference, unless there's any conflicts.
Monday the night?
Yep, I believe we've got a number of outstanding audits that we need to review and.
Yes, that is, and you said that's at what time?
2:00.
2:00. I guess you have enough time?
Lenis has assured me.
They are efficient. For those that are new on the council, we routinely try to schedule committee meetings the days of council meetings, sometime in the day, ideally right beforehand, so that you can go from one to the other for those that work or do whatever else and travel. It makes it easier to assure the highest percentage of those of us can do this. Though it's not a requirement, you know, if, when you're scheduling your meetings and you need to schedule it another day, that is perfectly acceptable, but. Okay, and are there any other reports from officers, officers' boards or committees? Seeing none, I will just ask at this point that we make sure that the list of officer boards and committee appointments is shared with the administration. I think that we passed one out yesterday, but if we could email that from the council office, just to make sure, because some of those committees obviously have members outside of the council as well, so we want to make sure and share that citywide. And at this point, we are at the clerk's report.
I thought we just finished this.
You already did it. Yeah, so I'm missing some stuff on my agenda, sorry, on my, on my script today. Are we now at committee of the whole at this point?
So moved.
Second. All right, there it is on the online one.
Seconded by.
Sorry, that was a motion by, that was a motion by Councilman Jenkins, and second by Corbin.
Thank you.
And Mr. Chairman, I'll make a.
That's unanimous approval.
Motion of approval of the January 13 minutes.
Second. I think we're just missing, there we go. All right, that's unanimously adopted. And now we are at communications with the mayor.
Nothing else, thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. And at this point, do we have any additional communications from council members? Councilman Bradford.
Chairman, one of my residents, I'm going to put a note in my, in my office, something about the drinking water, who's familiar with that? Who can, who can explain this to me?
Barbara Featherstone.
This is Featherstone.
And while Barbara's coming up here, I did notice that Councilman Corbin clicked his request to speak button, but it didn't show up on the things with anybody else. Clicked one and.
Are you familiar with the letter that was sent out to the residents in the?
In the water bills for the, we had a violation for missing a sample in September. We have a number of different sampling and testing schedules and requirements, you know, passed down through EPA that's administered by the Department of Health and Hospitals. Year before last, in 2013, the Department of Health and Hospitals changed for that particular set of samples, changed the sampling schedule. We do it quarterly, and it had been in October. They changed it to a September schedule, and our lab had been doing the October schedule for multiple, multiple years. And so we, we missed the sample in September, and we collected the sample in October. But because we collected the sample late, we're required to send a notice. Our samples came back fine, but we're required to send a notice.
But I'm saying this didn't go all, throughout the city, went into specific areas, right?
Which, um, we, that was sent in the water bills.
Yes.
Yes. It went out to the entire city. It should have been in everyone's water bill. You might not have gotten it yet.
No, I'm saying that I'm paperless or whatever, so I don't.
Oh, they're supposed to send a separate, they're, they're sending a separate mailing towards the end.
Separate mailing for this purpose.
For people who are paperless.
Okay.
And we do encourage paperless, but for people who are paperless, we have a separate mailing, we have to gather those addresses. It's a little time consuming, so it usually gets done at the end of the cycle.
Well, I'm sorry, and it was my misunderstanding.
Oh, no, no.
I thought it was specifically sent to their area, because I didn't know.
Oh, no, sorry, no, sorry. It was, it was citywide. We, we missed a sample in September that, and we got it in October, which we had gotten in October the previous year.
Okay, I understand. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. And was there anybody, did you, Councilman Corbin?
And I know Brian has stepped out, so Dale and Mayor Tyler, I'll address you with this and let you pass it on. I don't need an answer on it today. I'm concerned when we do a new development, and especially, I see it sometimes with retail developments in the district that I represent, where a site plan's approved, landscaping, sidewalks, things like that are approved. The development progresses, it opens the business, and is there, who's supposed to go back and check after the fact to be sure that the landscaping is, is still there, still alive, trees haven't been blown over by the wind and are laying on the ground, sidewalks have been cleared of the sills and things like that? And, and I don't know, I don't know if that's just a gap that we have, but if you would look into that, and, and you can let me know offline where we are with that.
Thank you.
Alan Clark, who's my zoning administrator, he is the one who enforces the zoning ordinance, and if somebody has done landscaping and puts it in and then lets it die, then we are responsible. My inspectors go out, check it out to see if the landscaping is, is dead and they're not maintaining it. And then that's when we file a report and follow up on enforcing the requirements of the site plan. That's a very important part of the process, because we're going to approve anything all day long, but if it's not actually enforced, it falls apart at the end. So you're absolutely correct, that is a very important part of the process.
And that's my concern. I mean, I guess they get a certificate of occupancy.
Yes.
And I just want to be sure that we're checking that, and there's, I'm not going to name the business, Dale and I have talked about it, I think you and I have. This business particularly has some landscaping issues. They are running their irrigation system twenty, or every day of the year, even when it's cold, so when we had a 15 or 16 degree day, and their irrigation system mostly lands in the street, we had big sheet of ice out there, and, you know, I think the idea that we have two or three inches of water every morning sitting on a concrete street that's going to end up hurting that street, so besides issues in zoning, we may have some public works issues, but.
I agree.
You know, that, that just may be something that we look at to be sure that as we have new developments come in, make sure that we're, we're getting that covered, because that's, that's a lot for one person to do, I know.
And it may be worth a larger discussion of really how do we, how do we make sure that those zoning inspectors, as well as those, those inspectors that come together for T-bone operations, property standards, water and sewer, solid waste, there's inspectors in a number of departments, could be worth looking at, how do we coordinate all of those efforts to make sure they're not doubling back, make sure they're.
Sure.
They're, you know, cross-trained and aware of all the other standards that are in place so that, you know, we can start holding people to it.
And not to just say, just to repeat this, as you know, you hear me say this all the time, but with the UDC, it will give me actually more teeth in the ordinance to implement things like landscaping maintenance, tree preservation, things that have been kind of heretofore been kind of looked off to the side. We're going to try to incorporate all those things so that we actually can enforce the rules effectively.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mark. Are there any other communications from council at this time? If not, we will move on to public comments. I've got a few public comments here today, I'm going to just call them out in order of that I received them. The first is Jeffrey Jackson. If you could state your name and address for the record.
Jeffrey Duane Jackson, Metta Rawan Hotel, but the address would ID be 1208 North Pine Drive, Street Port Louisiana.
Great. And Mr. Jackson, I'm sorry, do we need to put the timer on? Sorry, administrative glitch. We'll get there in a sec. And when the timer starts, you'll have three minutes at that point, and if you need additional time, feel free to ask for it again.
Okay. Organ of the Holy See, Book of Daniel, far as a benedict gold and unabenedict gold, the Alpha and Omega, being the administrative lead far as a doctor general, economics and economic growth, and what I'm trying to do since my bill been approved, coming into effect of 2015, I see for Saturdays, Sunday to be Saturday, for the Sabbath Day, and to change the household representatives from Republicans of a rebel flag to Democrats of American flag, biblical country, as being the organ of the Holy See, the Book of Daniel, the only forgotten son of God from the beginning, the Alpha. And that's a building plan that I'm trying to get a motion for, from moving in Louisiana to, to school board rebels, to generals, Jacksons, soldiers, far as schools, education, from the audience of eighth grade to master scholars, 12th grade, and inheritance as far as college game and play of, and forcing, uh, broken growth, the kids, and it's all about inheritance, yeah, politics and politicians far as growth, growth right instead of growth wrong, priest, priest the house, just know. Let's see where I'm coming from. I got, do you want to look at my folder, far as?
What we may do, you're running out of time here, but what we may do is contact you afterwards, see if we can look at additional information.
What about the move, I mean, conference meeting, or as?
It may be helpful, it sounds like you've got a number of ideas, it may be helpful to put them in written format so that we can review them, and so what I might suggest is if you could write down some of the things that you want to discuss, you can share that with the council clerk or with the CAO, and we can take a look at them and see if we can, you know, get our, get ourselves situated to all the issues that it is that you want to discuss.
It's pretty much on, it's pretty much in the courthouse. It's, it's pretty much online in the federal court already.
Okay.
P L A form and, and, and letters and fax into the White House.
Okay, well, thank you. Well, we may not have copies of this, so you may want to still write something out for us, but we appreciate your comments today, and, and invite you to submit, you know, some of your ideas in writing so that we can maybe provide a better response.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Mr. Sammy Mears.
Sammy Mears, 1901 Sintenary Boulevard, Street Port Louisiana, 71101. And Mayor Ali, I see we're wearing both pink, I've got my pink bracelet. I just wanted to say, first of all, that I felt a little bit Edith Bunker dingbat style, because since the street repairs were mentioned, I just wanted to say that I have been told before that they will never fix themselves because they don't have their own hands and arms. And if they did, then I guess we would be in a very bad situation. I just hope that everyone will try to work together and see if you can do the best you can to unify.
Absolutely.
Because I'd like to see that. And it made me think that, what I was thinking about, maybe just work from the heart, it made me think of Proverbs 23:12 that I was thinking about today as a Bible study. Apply your, let's see, apply your heart to, okay, apply your heart to instruction and your ears to words of knowledge. That's what I was thinking of, I didn't want to blank out on that. Apply your heart to instruction and your ears to words of knowledge in Proverbs 23:12, so that should help maybe get everyone to unify together. And I saw this real dumb advertisement just recently, and James, I know that I had something to say to you about it. Do you see how many fingers I'm holding up? It's September, and that's the commercial I saw, because this person was either deaf or just stupid, and I chose both. And James, that's why I called you immediately and told you that had to be either the dumbest, well, that was the dumbest or the stupidest. And I know that someone had their brain on Jupiter, only they probably didn't know it. So it didn't surprise me any. And there's one time on the, All in the Family, that I was just thinking about how Edith Bunker was really a dingbat, because one time when this man told her, Ms. Bunker, we don't use the undertaker word, and she said, oh, the mafia, and goes like.
Thank you, Sammy. And next on public comments, we have Mr. Ken Craft. Before he starts though, since I'm going to miss the Broadmoor Neighborhood Association meeting tonight, you noted Ackard and Captain Treat, so you could just bring that out.
Kenneth Craft, 157 Archer Avenue. Thank you. Want to welcome Mr. Crawford and thank Mr. Sidley, or as I call it, Mr. Freckward and Mr. Libias, because I have to anagramize it, and I had my nicknames, and when Mayor High Tower was there, it was Snow White and the Seven Dwarfs, but that doesn't apply now, so it's Dorothy and her munchkins from the wizard. We should use the city's website more than we are to post upcoming neighborhood meetings such as Mr. Corbin tonight at University Terrace, or Mr. Stan Harris, our Public Works Director at Southern Hills, or Dr. Gary Joyner at the BNA meeting to talk about the school board a week ago approved 12 zip, the $108 million May 2nd bond issue. Got Lou Burnett on that, he said May 5th. I corrected him. I guess he thought it was the 5th. And I'm concerned about that election being on the fourth anniversary of Bin Laden. And I'm concerned about that election being on the fourth anniversary of Bin Laden, but we really should, whether that's community development or MPC, we should use the website. We should update it. If you go to it now, it lists neighborhood presidents who are deceased, like Wilbert Williams and others. Some have been deceased for three or four years, they're, I don't know whose job it is to update it, but needs to be. And when you talk to Stan, I always think about Laurel and Hardy, because it's Stan and Holly, but, but, you know, math, thank you for bringing that up, algebra, I-20 plus I-49 equals I-69 in ninth grade, right? And yet, we're not doing anything, so causing the question 31-32, because its need or lack thereof hinges on I-69 coming by the port. And I want to say rest in peace to Mr. Johnson, who perished in a fire at, near Oliver, I mean, near Hardy in Arkansas. We once went three or four years in a row without a fire fatality when Chief Cochran was chief, and then, and then in other years, we lose three or four or five citizens to fires. Still want to do the Lincoln on a Lincoln, I still want you all to come up with something for streets. If you don't like the prior mayor's proposal, come up with something. I don't think there's enough money, whether it's 400 million or whether pavement management says less. And the exec director of the MPC told me, he was, I'm going to drop this, just mention briefly, the Scono needs to be resurrected. He'd been talking to Cliff LeBlanc about that, again, the neighborhood associations. Again, you've heard this before, but a city charter review committee at some point, a lot of technical changes, it's not in concert with the reality. We should do it every four years, but it's been a long time. And finally, happy number 259 to Mozart, and rest in peace. Ed White.
Tim.
Gus Grissom and Chapey, who perished 48 years ago today on the Cape.
Thank you, Mr. Craft. All right, let's see. If there are no more comments, the committee rises and reports, and I'll call this meeting adjourned.
Well done, Mr. Chair.